All right, it's 6:30, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item C, adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, members of the board, we have two items I'm recommending to amend the agenda with tonight. We add item three, discussion and consideration of acceptance of a gift. And I believe Mr. Newitt is gonna present on that. And add item four, which is discussion and consideration of a photocopier, print, lease, purchase, and service supply agreement.
I move we amend the agenda by adding the following to item J, new business is recommended by the superintendent, discussion and consideration of acceptance of gift, discussion and consideration of copier, printer lease, purchase, and service supply agreement.
I second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor.
Thank you. Item D, approval of minutes.
I move we approve the minutes of April 12, 2016, board meeting is presented.
I second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor.
Communications and correspondence.
There were several letters of retirement and/or resignation that some of which were sent to you and some are circulating amongst you right now. I'll address those in my report.
Item F, public participation. If there's anybody in the audience that wanted to bring something to the board, this is the time in the meeting when you can do that. Item G, administrative and student board member reports. Wyatt, you're in the hot seat.
Good evening. Another fairly short report for me this month, starting with Relay for Life. The council is in the final stages of planning for Relay for Life, and we're currently asking students who are interested in joining us to sign up with the student council members and directors. And last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we supplied our teachers with goodies each day, including ice cream from Morton's Moo, chocolate, apples, sweets and desserts, and handwritten thank you letters to each of the teachers. And we are holding elections in preparation for next school year. That includes, well, starting off with our executive board members on the student council, and following that, we will be holding elections for the outside members of the student council. So that pretty much wraps it up for May, so if any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Building administrative reports. Dan Clifford.
Good evening, you have my report. Just wanna touch on every 15 minutes and thank you to the full Ellsworth community for all their participation and help. We ended up with 28 students that participated, and you know, it was a tough two days, but I think educational two days, and so thank you to the parents and students for participating and community members for helping. We had Charles Rotmill come in, he's a Holocaust survivor, and he spoke to the students two weeks ago, and he spoke for about 45 minutes and had a slideshow and pretty much, you know, kinda told his life, and growing up in Brussels, Belgium, and then during the invasion, escaped that area with his family. He did lose two family members during that time. He and his brother ended up moving to New York, and he made his way to Portland, Maine, and he's gone all over the state of Maine sharing his story, and that was a terrific day, you know, for sharing. And one that's out on my report that you're getting tonight is, you know, I think it's worth mentioning, Brian Higgins retiring as the boy soccer coach at Ellsworth High School. He has coached over four years, and just a few of his stats, he had 18 regional championships. His total record is 566 wins, 103 losses, and 45 ties. He had over 500 students play for him, you know, so he's left quite a legacy, and all over the state of Maine, when you say Ellsworth High School, it's usually followed up with, wow, they got a great soccer program, you know, and he engineered that and developed that, and so I thought he was worth mentioning in the principal's report. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Tim Newitt.
Good evening. At Ellsworth Middle School, in school news, over the last few months, we've developed something called the Habits of Work, which is similar to what EHS has, and we'll be implementing those next fall, and this is a reporting out to parents and students how their children or child has performed in non-academic categories, but categories that certainly we wanna instill in our students about being a collaborative worker, quality worker, and responsible citizen. And you know, there's a, you know, a rubric that goes with that, so that the teachers that share each student will sit down each trimester and record that information, both for the report card and as a record in the faculty campus. So we're pleased to share that side of school life with the parents starting next fall. With regard to parent contacts, we set our goal at the start of the year for 3,000 parent contacts K through eight, and with updated numbers than what I gave you on Friday, over the last two months, K through eight, there's been another 1,055 contacts, for a total of 5,215, so we far surpassed our goal, and it's pretty exciting to hit 5,000 contacts. I mean, that's a lot of communication our teachers take the time to make with parents, whether it's email or phone, and we appreciate it, and I hope the parents do too. EEMS hosted the district Modern Woodman Speech Contest, which is open to students in middle school grades, but it's grade seven where that takes place at the, at our middle school. And we had two students place first and third in that event. Taylor Clark won it, and Lily and Frank placed third. Taylor competes tomorrow in a regional Modern Woodman Contest in Winterport, so we are wishing the best for Taylor. The speech on hunger in America really blows you away, it's really impressive. And speaking of thank yous, I'd like to thank the Ellsworth Garden Club for the things that they've done for us, both recently and in the fall. Most recently, over April break, they installed a deer fence. This is after DigSafe came through and made sure we could dig post, or they could dig post holes and install this with cedar posts, and it kinda looks like a little fort outside the school, and I don't mind that at all, it looks pretty good, and good luck deer, you won't be eating our vegetables this summer, thanks to them. And last week, we honored Jane Phillips, a 41-year veteran teacher who retired a year or two ago, and a lilac bush was planted in her honor in front of the school, and each year, one grade level participates in that activity. This year, it was grade six. And they learned about lilacs, they learned about arbor day, and they certainly paid a very nice tribute to Jane Phillips. And the third thing is, last fall, we planted an additional 350, I should say that wrong, I said that wrong, another 800 tulips, because everybody in the school did it last year, and they did it again this past fall, so you've got like 1,600 tulips, they're all blooming as we speak, and it's really quite beautiful. So thanks to the Ellsworth Garden Club for their partnership with us, it's greatly appreciated. Co-curricular news, we lost our two home track meets due to the wind, taking care of our bleachers and placing them right on the lane, so our two home meets have been turned into away meets, and we're doing just fine with that. We do share the two-thirds of the track with the high schools from a practice standpoint, so that's worked out well. Drama has its second play of the year that's going to be shown on May 22nd and 23rd at 7:00 PM, it's called Beowulf, user-friendly, we'll also show that to the students the morning of the 23rd. And a week from Saturday, we host, we've done this for like three years now, the annual robotics meet, which goes from about three or four different sites across the state, and we happen to be one of them, and it's nice, our kids don't have to travel, we can compete, and parents can come see it easily, and it's a very good time. Parent news, we're hosting another potluck, we had one in the fall, this one is coming up on June 2nd, and it's put on by the, our garden club, and you know, we hope parents will come out, see the gardens, have a nice meal, and should be fun. We will get a flyer out to parents with the details. And due to a school board meeting, our graduation is gonna now be on June 13th instead of June 14th. Kids don't mind that, they get out an extra day early from eighth grade, so it's at 6:00 on Monday, June 13th. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, we, I just wanted to thank everybody who have been bringing their children early to school. We started our early morning recess, it has been a huge hit, everybody is enjoying it. Some days, we have about, I would say, 400 children maybe on the playground, and you would not know it. They are all just playing and running, and they all come in and they all go to breakfast. Our breakfast has gone up to 250 children a day, so that's been exciting. If you do not want your child to eat breakfast, please send a note in, we stop it right away. And we are sending the notices home every week now, so that once it hits $10, people know. I really wanna thank Ray and his staff, we have to even, you know, we run out of trays because there's so many kids eating breakfast, and the teachers have said how much the kids are so much more relaxed during the day, and that's been exciting. We also are gonna do a study around how much activity we get in our school, we just got our perimeters, and so we're choosing about six to eight kids from each grade level that we'll put the perimeter on each morning and take it off at night, just to see how much real activity we get, because our building is so large, just walking in and out, so that's on its way starting next week. We are gonna continue our partnership with Child and Family Opportunities next year. In fact, they are going to be moving their program into, back to EEMS, so that's exciting, and if you are at all interested, you can call Jamie Spencer, and she will get you enrolled, so that's exciting. And our kindergarten registrations continue to grow, we're now at 73 students, and we would like to see some more, so if you haven't registered your children out there, we'd love to have them come in, just call the school and we'll take you in. For parent and community news, we've had a really successful year with our walking school bus. It has walked from Hancock Street down to pick up the children at the Y and then on to EEMS. We are hoping that we can expand that route next year, but we are always looking for volunteers. Our coordinator is going to step down, Dave Nowitzki has been heading that program, and he has informed us that he would like somebody else to take it over, so we will be putting that out next week, looking for somebody to come and help us do that. I'd like to thank him, he's done an excellent job. Our PTF, as Wyatt had mentioned, for the school council, our PTF also gave us Morton Moo ice cream, which was great. They also provided two breakfasts on Tuesday and Thursday morning. We also had a family, the Albert family, provided lunch on Tuesday of Subway's, and a local church provided lunch on Wednesday, so it was really nice that community members came out and helped as well. Our annual walkathon is next, I mean, is this Friday, and because of our track, we are going to be having alternative loops, we're going to close down the school street, so from Pond Avenue down and from the Forest Avenue down, we'll be shutting those off. You can access the school through the Shore Road, and we'll be having children run that long length, and we'll be walking the bus loop. So we have made adjustments, and for the middle level, they're going to be walking around the boys' baseball field, is that correct? The boys' baseball field. So we hope that you are getting lots of pledges, or kids are asking for pledges, it is for K-4, our only major fundraiser that we do, and it does help us fund things like the Author and other great stuff. Last, we continue to work with the Maine College Circle, that is our Frenchman's Bay, it's called, it's where children in grades three through six are given the opportunity to write an essay about what they wanna be when they grow up and how they can get there. And we had 102 students join us this year in writing essays, it was very exciting, and out of the 102, 21 scholarships were given out, and out of the 21 scholarships, 18 were given to EEMS students. And so we're very proud of all the students who took place, but here are the students who were awarded and will be tomorrow night at our pizza celebration at 6:00. In third grade, it's Maverick Ashburn, Addison Atherton, Noah DiNannato, Isaiah Valenci Carter, Sidney Scott, Griffin Merrill, and Catherine Ford. In fourth grade is Noah Bouvier, Owen Frank, and Natalie Sawyer. In fifth grade is Casey Carter, Skylar Clayton, Miracle Hill, Caroline Masgai, and Carter Colson. And in sixth grade is Maddie Henry, Olivia Ringette, and Paige Sawyer. And if you get a chance, the school committee, if you would like to come tomorrow at 6:00, Bob Stewart talks about their essays and really gives a nice overview of what they wrote about and how they're gonna get there. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Have you noticed that less kids are tardy since you started the process?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, no, it's been, it's really, it made a difference. Kids wanna get to school, in fact, I've heard parents say, I couldn't get 'em out of bed, and now they like, I can't get in the car fast enough to get there.
I can tell, when I drop my, I used to drop them off at 7:30, and there would be no one there, and now I have to wait in line to drop them off, so.
Yeah, it's really exciting, and I wish that, you know, we will look, I know, Kelly, you know this, but in the wintertime, we are planning not to do this, because we live in Maine, and children will be outside getting wet in the morning, and we don't have the drying capability for 500 students for their snow pants, and so we're gonna try to figure out something that we can continue. But this time period of social time from 7:30 to 8:15 will continue, no matter what we decide to do, and I think that makes a difference for kids too.
That's great news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Boe.
Good evening. Just a couple of things from Hancock County Technical Center. The first, I'd like to honor a couple of students and celebrate their accomplishments. The first is Connor Petroz from Ellsworth High School, who was selected as our Student of the Year. Every year, the 27 current technical schools from across the state nominate a senior to receive this award, and on April 20th, we honored him at a MAC-T banquet in Lewiston. He also was one of the two $1,000 scholarship recipients of the MAC-T Scholarship Award that's given every year, so we were very excited, we haven't had someone win that since I've been here, so that was very exciting. And then, as soon as the banquet was over, we learned he was being honored in Portland, and he won an award at the Young Filmmakers Film Festival, and received the People's Choice Award for his film. If you saw it, it's been kind of shared all over Facebook for some of the work that he's done, so we're very proud of Connor and his accomplishments. I wanna thank everyone who this year came to the Brookside Restaurant at Hancock County Technical Center. Our numbers this year were actually higher than they have been in years past on a consistent basis, so that was really good news for the kids. We had a great last day on Wednesday, May 4th, thank you to those of you that came, and it was wonderful to honor the seniors and celebrate their accomplishments and to discuss where they're going next. Kind of in the theme of the last couple of meetings, we've talked about alumni. We have an Ellsworth High School and HCTC alumni, Cynthia Thielen, who is being recognized with a national award. She's currently a student at the University of Maine, and this year, when we're in Louisville, Kentucky, she will be one of only a select few of students who is being honored with the President's Volunteer Service Award for her volunteer work and civic work with Skills USA at the state and the national level. She also was a student profile in the National Skills USA Magazine this month, and I attached that article for you to read. Those of you that knew Cindy when she was at Ellsworth High School, she's gone so far, we're so proud of her and excited for her to represent us. It'll be pretty neat to have one of our own being onstage at Nationals, getting recognized for her work. A Skills USA fundraising update, we had about $20,000 to fundraise, we're about halfway there, which is actually pretty good at this time of year. Currently, our two big fundraisers that are upcoming is right now, we're actually selling a beautiful garden shed that has windows and everything, it's beautiful, our carpentry kids made it, we're only selling 300 tickets for $20 apiece, so if anybody is interested in supporting our fundraising events, I have raffle tickets. If anyone would like to call the school and purchase one, please feel free. I also attached for you the flyer and a registration form for our annual Boggy Brook 5K, so if you or anybody else would like to just come and even walk that day, we're welcome to have you. Finally, it's that time of year already where we start getting crazy with end-of-the-year stuff. What I've listed for you is the start of some of our end-of-year events at HCTC. Because we did receive the Melmat grant this year, we're doing our first big event on May 12th, which is Thursday. We're doing our first ever Career Fair, we have a lot of businesses from the community setting up booths between the hours of nine and three. Any of you are welcome to come and walk through if you'd like. We're gonna have them set up booths all throughout the school and in the programs, people from the community are welcome to come, and our students will all get a chance to go through the entire school. They won't just visit with vendors in their own program, they'll meet with vendors from across the school, we're gonna sporadically space them out. We're also having the Ellsworth High School ninth graders come up for about an hour on that day as well, and so they'll get a chance to not only see programs, but they'll also get to see possible career vendors. What we're trying to do is match career vendors up with our programs, so we have some city departments participating, we have businesses participating, and we have larger organizations coming in as well, so that should be a good day. I also have listed for you some of our end-of-the-year certification exams for our students, and those are being added to as we speak. Also, the week of May 16th through the 20th will be the Early Childhood Licensing Exam, and we will also have the automotive exams that week as well, so we are gearing up for that. Finally, May 31st is our annual HCTC Awards Night at Ellsworth High School at 6:00, you'll all be receiving formal invitations to that event. That's a great night where we honor the best and brightest at our school and induct students into National Technical Honor Society. Any questions?
How did you reach out to local businesses and organizations for your career, Amy?
Our Melmat coordinator, Josh Riordan, used advisory lists for some programs. What we did was, we started really small, and so program instructors personally reached out to one, maybe two, who had inquired over the past year about, would you ever let me come in and talk to your students about job opportunities or trainings we may have? So we started with those people, we didn't wanna get too big, too fast, so businesses that have kind of contacted us throughout the year, looking for work and employment, we hit those up first.
That's great, thank you. Amy.
Good evening, everybody, it's nice to see you, as always, and I sent you a report. We're at our time of year where we're sort of winding things down, we don't have the same kinds of activities that the K-12 kids have, because a lot of our parents are attending things like that, so we have fewer activities this time of year. We do, I have, did not put it on the report, but our graduation will be June 15th at 6:00 in the auditorium at Ellsworth High School, so we'd love to have you join us for that, and you'll all be getting an invitation for that. Our CNA course is underway, and it's been really exciting. For those of you who don't know, Debbie Richards, who's a teacher with us, she has been having, she was very tentative, but she has been having a blast, and the students have too, in co-teaching with our CNA instructor, it's been really wonderful. She has a lot of experience teaching reading and coaching teachers, one of her jobs in Texas was coaching literacy across the content areas with math and science teachers, so it's been a really fabulous experience. And in a, not next year, but the next year, we'll be receiving federal dollars, hopefully we'll be successful in writing a grant, and when we do, we will be required to integrate academic instruction with technical training. So it's been a really wonderful experience, and in fact, the three of us are gonna be participating in a course to learn more about how to sort of take that to scale, so we're kind of excited about that coming up this year. We're, right now, enrolling people, this is a really great time, we still, we stop our HiSET testing the end of May, because we have, we need to get, go cycle through so that people can grad, know that they're gonna graduate, and we also have to adjust, and we'll be giving the HiSET test via computer, so we need to do some, have some setup to do for that. But we're, so we still, we're still working with people, I just met with somebody yesterday, and he's gonna graduate, I mean, that's how quickly it can happen for some people. But we're definitely eager to meet with people now, because we like people to get, hit the ground running in the fall, so just like kindergarten registration, this is a good time for adult ed registration, so that you can go into the summer, have a great summer, and then be ready to start in the fall. We also design our courses based on what people need, so it's a great time to hear from folks. We're also just starting, in May and June is when we dive in and set up our enrichment programs for the fall, so if anybody has any suggestions, you can go to our website, or give us a call, or stop in, and that's, if you have an idea for a course that you'd like to see, or if you'd like to teach a class, we have a course proposal packet, I, we send that out to give you some ideas, and then meet with me, and we have a conversation. Be great to get some interesting courses. And the ECAS, I think I've mentioned last week, and that's underway, it was a lot less painful, I didn't get so many gray hairs, sometimes with implementing these systems on my own, I get frustrated, but it's been pretty seamless, and we're really glad to have it now that the HiSET is gonna be computer-based, it's important for folks to have practice with that. And we're actually gonna do some piloting of that this summer for the CASIS organization, because it's very urban biased, and so they want rural folks to take it. The current test, I think, is extremely urban biased, you know, metro stops and things like that are on it, so we're excited about that, so I think that's it. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Rachel.
We have, we are winding down in some ways as well, and then winding up for the summer end curriculum. The CIA team is wrapping up their work on creating the benchmark essential skills in grades two, five, and eight. We plan to share these standards and skills lists with you at an upcoming board workshop. We met as a group on Monday, and did a lot of work in creating professional development opportunities for teachers next year. The committee reviewed journals and books, current research and videos to share with the EST faculty, and PLCs, and during professional development days next year. So we've added a lot of the kinds of researches that we'd like to look at in terms of what, in reaction to a survey we sent to teachers, asking them the kinds of things they'd like to become stronger in, and the things that are challenging in proficiency-based education, and spent a day researching and discussing the ways in which we could support teachers. Eleven middle and high school teachers and four administrators attended the Maine Curriculum Leaders Association Conference called Growing Independent Learners last Friday. We learned about effective strategies to encourage student engagement and how to lead student-centered learning. Our group had discussions, teachers shared with me, facilitated by Jean Garrity, an educational presenter from Wisconsin, who was extremely dynamic and very knowledgeable. Then finally, our gifted and talented education in Ellsworth, over the last three weeks, Patty Drapo has been in Ellsworth with us, a teacher of creativity and also a contractor for the Department of Education. She joined me in meeting with district teachers and students in all three schools to talk about the best programming options in our districts for identifying and serving gifted and talented students in Ellsworth. Through these discussions, we have articulated and defined the process, and we've also defined program pathways for the gifted and talented program, and for students who have particular interests going throughout Ellsworth, from kindergarten through 12th grade. So now, I'm in the process of documenting the information that we received from teachers and from students. We met with students and talked about their experiences in high school, and so I'm going to create a formatted program, and that will be in a handbook that will be posted to our website by the end of the school year. So that'll be another way in which the community will be able to see the kinds of programming that is available. We have amazing programs, and now we'll have one of one place where if you have a student who is particularly interested in engineering, or the arts, or particular pieces of media, they will be able to kind of track through the kinds of offerings they would have in each year of the high school, and even throughout kindergarten through eighth grade as well. Do you have any questions?
I'm just curious, so it sounds like Patty Kane did some great work with teachers. How is it that professional development is prioritized? Like, how was it decided that gifted and talented would be a priority over something like identifying high-risk students, or children with mental health issues? Is there a professional development plan, or what is that process?
The, this meeting that we, working with Patty, was to articulate the programs that we have here. We weren't working with teachers for professional development, we were merely kind of creating focus groups with the teachers to talk about what the programming has been in the past. Currently, we have an open position in the high school, and so we wanted to make sure that when we are able to hire someone, that that position would fill the needs of the teachers and the students, in the way the teachers at schools, students are learning now. And so it was more about talking with teachers about the types of programming that they feel that the students need, and so that was identified as a way to further the program. In lieu of having a person right now in the high school, we decided to use those resources to be able to talk to teachers, and talk to administrators, and talk to the students as well, to make sure that when we hire someone for that position, they're filling the needs and have a kind of a programmatic construct that will most help people. So that wasn't so much about identifying the programmatic needs for professional development, it was for actual services to students, and how we can identify and articulate the program. We don't currently, as the Ellsworth School Department, since we've become our own entity this time, have an articulated program as far as a handbook and that kind of thing. And though we've had services in K-8 consistently all the way through, we wanted to make sure that we could have parents and the community members be able to look at the program as a whole, and understand where their child would fit and have a place, and the options that we've been offering all along. There's, when we sat with teachers, there was just multitudes of programs, electives in the senior year, the bridge year program, dual enrollment, there's so many opportunities. The VPA Academy, and we've gotten several new supports as far as materials and that kind of thing, so the SIG grant, and we were just able to kind of bring all those different resources that the high school and the elementary and middle school are offering, and really be able to define them under the one umbrella of a gifted and talented program that's offered in Ellsworth.
Thank you, Mason. All right. Mr. Higgins.
Members of the board, good evening, members of the audience, members of the viewing public. Heard Mr. Newitt mention a little bit earlier, we've lost our two home track meets, and this news is a little bit late, Mr. Newitt, but it's good news. Just an update on the bleachers and track, Delu Stadium. Received confirmation late yesterday afternoon that the final inspection of the bleachers is going to take place tomorrow. Engineer is going to come and do his final work, and following that inspection, inspected, that we, excuse me, it is expected that we will receive authorization to start removing the bleachers from the track, so we can start moving back towards having some limited use while we make repairs to the track. Now, the one question that remains to be answered is, just how much of that is salvageable? We hope to get that information tomorrow, but it is certainly a positive step in what has been a longer process than we anticipated. We want to mention that for the community, however, because there are still some community events that are scheduled to take place that rely on that track and field facility. A very brief legislative update. During the recently adjourned session, Maine legislators enacted LD 1641. You can read the title of my written report, I'm just going to paraphrase it. It's an act to establish a commission to reform public education funding and improve student performance. In essence, what this bill did, this is the bill that added $15 million to general purpose aid in the funding formula, but it also established a commission who is charged with developing recommendations on improving public education, but probably equally as important, looking at how education is funded in Maine. The essential programs and services funding model, which I'll talk about when we talk budget a little bit later, has been in place for a number of years, and it has been tinkered with over and over and over again. But one of the problems with that, however, is it has never been fully funded. There have been a number of legislative commissions that have taken place and been put in place over the years, many of which have not had their recommendations implemented. I served on one last year that resulted in seven recommendations being put forth in this legislative session. That bill did not have anything moved forward. There was a report four years ago called the Picas Report, which ultimately recommended an increase of $200 million in funding for public education in Maine. That certainly has not been implemented. My hope, however, is with the language in this report, that there's going to be some effective reforms coming out. There is language in there that says, beginning in 2017, 18, an increase in at least 1% of the state share annually will be added each year until it reaches 55%. If that annual increase does not occur, there will be no new initiatives of programs established for K-12 public education from the same funding source. So I think that's a sigh of relief being breathed from the field. So hopefully, that's going to provide some changes to funding for public education that will create a more equitable and stable funding mechanism. I think it's appropriate that we talk about that a little bit on the night that we're talking about our budget. In talking about an Ellsworth alumni, Ellsworth graduate, I want to issue public congratulations to EHS Class of 1983 member Danny Kane on his pending induction into the Maine Baseball Hall of Fame. He graduated from Ellsworth High School, as I said, in 1983, and had a highly successful career as a player at the University of Maine, and he began coaching at George Stevens Academy immediately after. And if you followed him, even if you haven't followed him, it's hard not to see the amount of success he's had. Certainly speaks well for an Ellsworth High School graduate. Tomorrow, our administrative team is scheduled to meet with our new police chief, Pete Bickmore, and I would actually welcome Chief Bickmore to the meeting tonight. As I mentioned, Chief Bickmore is looking forward to working with the schools. He's going to come meet with us tomorrow, and we're going to talk about a number of things, including the possibility of looking at a school resource officer. So welcome, chief. We've had one new hire since the last time we met. Dwayne Bradford has joined us as a bus driver. And a number of letters of resignation and retirement. Travis Hardison, assistant wrestling coach at Ellsworth High School. Jennifer Miriam, special education teacher at the high school. Josh Reardon, Ed Tech at Hancock County Technical Center. Kelsey Schaefer, English teacher at the high school. Mathias Case, English teacher at the high school. Joe Weiner, music teacher at the high school. And May Dow, JV basketball coach on the girls' side at the high school. And even though Mr. Clifford mentioned it, there's another retirement that I would like to address separately tonight. It's that of Brian Higgins retiring from the Boys varsity soccer program. As Mr. Clifford said, Brian has been here since the early 1970s and has developed one of the most incredible programs in the state of Maine. Dan mentioned some of his statistics, but I think Brian's success and influence goes above and beyond wins and losses and championships. If you looked in his letter of retirement, excuse me, it's not resignation, it's retirement from soccer, it talks about the fact that every one of the players that played for him, every one of the graduating classes, received a medal in an Eastern Maine championship match. And Brian has always said that that's something that kids can take with them, they were part of something that was very successful on the extracurricular side. The other piece that many people don't know is the number of students that Brian worked with and influenced and helped keep in school by encouraging their participation in extracurricular athletic programs. So certainly, congratulations to Coach Higgins on a fantastic career of 42-plus years, and thank you to him for all the work that he did with student athletes over the years. He will certainly be missed on the soccer field. And that concludes my report, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Committee reports. We have nothing to review on that topic tonight.
I think on the, on the agenda, there is a second read and approval for the dress code policy, but that committee did not need to meet.
All right. Item I, old business, having none, we'll move to new business. Item J, staff presentation.
And we have principals and teachers here tonight who are going to present on the evaluation program.
Hi. So we had a committee made up of five teachers and four administrators, Mr. Higgins, myself, Mr. Newitt, and Mr. Clifford, and then it was Melanie Brown, Rebecca Wright, Julie Hammer, Lori Johnston, and Sheila Gallagher. And so we met for about seven months.
Yes.
About seven months.
Started in November.
Started in November, and Mr. Higgins did a great job leading us through vetting out what we needed to look for, and how we could get what Ellsworth School District wanted instead of, you know, just taking whatever was there. We were able to do a really nice job with that, and find a system that was a system that allowed teachers to grow, and for administrators to help them grow. And it was not the come in and watch, it's not going to be a come in and watch one lesson and call it good for the year. We have decided to go with the Marshall rubric, and Jim is going to show that to you. And the Marshall rubric is, it allows us to go in six to eight times and see some authentic teaching, and give immediate feedback to teachers about what's going on. And we were able to do a pilot, and Melanie was part of that pilot, and so I thought it would be nice for her to talk a little bit about what that was like as a teacher.
Having, I'm Melanie Brown. Teach fourth grade. As a teacher that never liked to be evaluated, it was just something I knew had to be done, but didn't care to have it ever done. A little PSD thing in the past, but no, this, this certainly has been a very positive experience, and for the other folks that also were in the pilot, they felt that too. It was nothing but good, having folks come in for five minutes, and then they come in and they leave. The kids don't even realize what they're doing. They see you at different times of the day, it might be something really good going on, or maybe not so good. Immediate feedback, you know, by the end of the day, you have something electronically sent to you, you can read, you can respond, so you can have a conversation between administrators. You can do face-to-face, but in our busy days, it's just as easy to do it electronically. So it's been met with a lot of positive feedback, so.
So one part of our evaluation system is the Marshall rubric, and part of that is, Jim's going to set that up, there are six domains, and under each domain, a domain might be instruction, and under each six domains, there are 10 indicators. So you know that you won't go in and find all of them at one time. And what it does allow us to do is have conversations with the teachers at the start of the school year, and sort of set the stage, and then halfway through the school year, we meet and say, how's it going? This is what it looks like, and then at the end. So I might go into Melanie's classroom, and I might see something that would be on a developing scale, but the next time I would go in and it would be on an effective scale. And so it doesn't just keep at where it is. They can continue to grow throughout the school year.
It's kind of, kind of neat, you know, you actually click on like time, and it tells you how many records, how many minutes you're actually in there, and you know, you're not supposed to be in there for very long.
Let me just explain, what you have up here, this is actually the evaluation software that we use, it goes along with the rubrics that you have copies of.
So when I come into a classroom, or any of the administrators come into a classroom, this is what we're going to have open. So instead of writing everything down, as in the past, kind of almost word for word, and then going back and, you know, writing a report, this has the six domains in gray. First, we're me, planning, and preparation, and then, you know, you can click on, you can click on it, and it lights up, highly effective, and that's how you see the teacher for that particular class. There's 10 items in each different domain. You're not expected to actually record all 60 in one lesson. That's why you go back up, you know, eight, eight times or so over the course of the year, and you'll see different things in different lessons, and you note that accordingly. And then you certainly, you can attach things here if you like. When you get to the end of that domain, there is a place for comments. So if I want to write a blurb about what I saw, or sum it up, there's a place for that. When this, so you can see, this goes like forever. You know, there's a lot of things we're looking for, and over the course of the year, you'll check those off, and then you will do like a, kind of a grand total type of thing. And there's point values, and there's different classifications based on the point values as to whether you're considered highly effective or effective, and needs improvement. I can't remember the exact terms, I think working on it or something like, there it is. Developing, and, you know, so this all gets translated into, I'll say, a formula of sorts, so that teachers know whether they're going to, you know, be on some type of action plan or no need for an action plan. And then after a year of this, the first year, we don't set goals at the beginning of the year, because we're trying to get baseline data, and then from there, we will be setting goals at the end of next year. We meet with the teacher at the beginning, middle, and end of the year, and to kind of go over our progress as we start, middle, and end. As Melanie said, you know, it was really done collaboratively. I really liked the fact that it wasn't just the top-down administrators saying, this is it, you know, teachers, you know, went through it, experienced it, and, you know, we made changes to this document, sent it to this company, Teach Point, and they're the ones that created this for us, based on what we felt was the best things that we were looking for, based on Marshall's rubric. How's that?
Very good. So that part of the evaluation is 85%. And then there's another part of the evaluation that this school district decided to pursue, and that's called the Student Learning Objective. That is sort of the achievement piece of what teachers do with kids, and we used to know it kind of like a SMARTboard. We used to set SMARTboards with teachers, but now it's called Student Learning Objective. So what they do is they look at their data, and, do you want to stand up since you're the teacher? Do you want to explain what you do?
Yep. I teach science and reading with most of the fourth graders. I chose to, to take my lowest readers, because I see them twice in a day, and build a goal around them. And I chose an assessment, and did it prior to the teaching, and taught, 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 and mid, oh, probably mid-January or so, give them another assessment to see how they were doing, and then a post at the end. This part, I know teachers are reluctant, or have been in the past, to do. They're afraid that their, their, their data is going to affect their, their overall, what am I trying to say? Yeah, their whole ability. And, exactly, and nothing could be further than, it's not that big of a deal, to be honest. You choose what your kids are doing, you choose the goal you want them to do, and you base it on, you know, just goal-setting. And I had an interesting experience with my assessment, and we've talked about that as a committee, on what to do when, when you have those circumstances, so as I say, the SLOs are not to be feared, from a teacher point of view.
And actually, what it does is it really drives instruction for teachers, so they are able to say, okay, this is what I want. It can be broad, or it can be small. And they set the assessment that they want to use, and they set the timeline, and of course, we had a very short timeline. We started in January and ended it in March, and so it was just a short period. The first year of the evaluation cycle, every teacher will do one SLO. Will wait and probably start it in October, November, once we get to know our students and have the data. And then the second year, they have two SLOs. So if you were a teacher, you might do, and you're only teaching social studies, you might do something on this unit, you might be doing something with context reading. It depends on what you want to do. But what we found is that's 15%, and at the end of the day, it's really negligible about how it shifts. So you could be a highly effective teacher, and your kids not do so well, and you're still going to be either effective or highly effective teacher. It, it really doesn't shift it so that it shows that you're not doing your job, because we know that apples to apples, oranges to oranges, kids, you know, shift every year, and so we're pretty excited about it. I think the committee had a great pilot. I know for me, I had eight teachers that I did, and Jim had...
One.
One, and Dan, you had three. And so I think we had a good cross-reference. We had teachers who were in special education. We had, uh, teachers who were in special education, um, in PE, in the arts, as well as content areas.
Yeah, I would just add, I think the pilot went very well, which I've said in previous meetings, but when, when you think about the SLOs, I think the 15% that those are going to count towards the overall summative effectiveness rating, it's negligible in terms of the effect on the overall rating. However, it is an accurate reflection of the teacher's skills in the classroom.
Yes.
Not every student may make the goal that is set for them, but what you can see from that is, is that the teacher is employing appropriate instructional practices. The other side of it, the 85%, the rubrics that you saw on the screen and the ones that were included in your packet, I, I brought the evaluation ratings just in case there were questions that I didn't know there would be. So if you look at these six domains with 10 indicators apiece, in order to be a highly effective teacher in any one of the domains, for example, planning and preparation, you have to have a performance rating of highly effective on eight of the 10 with no rating below effective on any indicator. So that's eight out of 10, highly effective, and no, the other two have to be effective. In order to be effective, it's highly effective or effective on eight of the 10 with no rating below developing. So it's a pretty high standard to meet for teachers. Then that's on each one of the six domains. And then you take the six domains together, in order to be a highly effective teacher across all six domains, you have to have performance ratings of highly effective on five of six domains and be effective in six alone. To be effective, you have to have ratings of highly effective or effective in all six. So it's a pretty lofty standard. And again, it's a very accurate reflection of what's expected of teachers in the classroom. Questions of presenters?
Do all children have the same SLO or is it individualized? It can be, so there are six different ways, sorry. There is, there are six different ways that you can do student achievement. You can do it by, um, you know, everybody wants to grow this much, or you can do it by individualized, you can do it by percentage, you can do it by moving one grade level or, you know, reading, it could be just by one text level. So the teachers can decide how that goes. The most important piece is the goal doesn't change. How you teach changes, and that's why you have that check-in time so you can see how are things going. And, um, for Melanie's situation, what we found is it was the assessment that was the problem, and we didn't change what the assessment was, but how kids could take the assessment, and there, there we saw the growth. So it really does, it is really teacher-led. It was an exciting process for me, for the first time really feeling like it was collaborative and it wasn't, um, it wasn't a show. It was authentic, real-time learning. It was exciting. Any other questions?
Does the building administrator doing all the, because next year, all the teachers are saying we'll be part of the program by starting in...
Yep. Yep.
So does the building or the principals do all the evaluations, or is there mentors or other?
So what we did this year is, um, so we have different people who could, like Lynn Maddox got trained, and so she could do some of the, um, some of the observations for the special educators, as well as I can do some of the observations for the special educators. Because remember, you go in six or eight times, 10 times, and then you take that and you meld it together. So, uh, Mr. McCloskey can go in at any time for either of us, Lynn could go in for any time for any of us, but you're right, there are a lot of teachers. But again, you're in the classrooms and it's so authentic and it's short periods. So, um, and the record, the Teach Point that April was able to find allows us to see, oh, it looks like I've gotten in three times around the same period. I've got to, as an administrator, I've got to go in at a different time. It really does keep all that data for you. And we were able to print out a report for the teachers that showed every time we went in, everything we saw and everything we said, and how many times we said it. It was pretty exciting.
Can I follow up on that? The same people who did evaluations under the previous system will continue to do the evaluations under this system. One of the things that will be added that will have a peer component, in the first year, people are going to start off setting goals. At the end of the year, when they get their summative evaluation rating, depending upon where they fall on that scale, every teacher is going to be put on a plan. It's either going to be a growth plan or an improvement plan. Within each of those plans, which won't start until the second year, are a number of components of things that teachers will do to either grow or improve. And that will include points of contact with peers, points of contact with principals, finding artifacts and data from work that they've done. So it's really an all-encompassing program. The part that we're showing you now is the part that we've piloted because that's the part that's going to start for real next fall. The other part will not start until the following year.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
And Melanie, thank you for coming in to help present.
Up next is the backpack program.
Yeah, we were hoping that Bill Dove would be able to be here tonight to represent the Everybody Eats, uh, program. Unfortunately, he's not able to be here, and I don't know if we're going to be able to get him scheduled by the end of the year, but we will try. So I would say we move on to item three.
Which means Jim's on again.
Mr. Duff.
He was high-fiving. Can we do it again?
If you could sit here, Jim.
Honestly, the backpack program is not part of my world. You know, I, I had a meeting, I think it was even today. I couldn't tell you how many families are being addressed by that, but it's, it's an ongoing thing. You know, more of that, the better, but I, you're talking to the wrong guy.
You're up for the discussion of the consideration of gift acceptance.
I was told by my colleagues that I was high-fiving. I was talking about backpack program. Let me, I'll be right back. I know a lot about apple orchards. Sorry about the snafu. We're very fortunate at EEMS that, um, our garden team, which, you know, meets monthly and sometimes even more often, um, you know, has, has, uh, been able to get the services of an outfit called Retrius to actually donate up to 15 apple trees, 12 to 15 apple trees to put on school grounds. And the Retrius guy and, um, some of our garden group members like Krista, um, you know, located the most appropriate site on school grounds for this, and it's on the non-playground side of the fence on the elementary side of the building. I never really looked over that side of the fence. There's a very, it's a significant-sized field, actually, where certainly 15 trees could be planted with no problem. A little bit of a downslope, but not, um, but not bad at all. You know, last month and this month are the months to plant, so we're hoping you approve this. In fact, I think I got an email today saying the 17th, a week from today, would be the day when they would actually like to do the planting if, if you approved this. There's no cost to the district, uh, other than after the first year, I think it's like $25 of, um, mulch each year, I think, to just hold, hold some of the water, um, for the plants. But to me, it, it seems like a great idea. These are dwarf plants, but in about four years, um, you know, we'll be harvesting apples. The idea would be that helping with the planting would be, I think, second grade, they said, so when they're in, you know, sixth or seventh grade, they'll be eating the apples they helped plant, um, you know, next week. So it's, to me, it's a good thing. Mr. Higgins and I walked it, uh, I think the end of last week. I walked it with Amy and Russ, uh, yesterday. No, no reason not to do it from where I, where I sit, uh, or stand. And the backpack program's really going really well. We'll put apples in those backpacks.
In your report, uh, it indicates that you wanted to, they wanted to plant the trees by the end of April, but apparently it's...
We're, we're late. I, I tried to sneak this in last month, it didn't work.
Okay.
You know, so we came back this month after Mr. Higgins and I could look at the, the plot of land and, um, you know, it, it's okay to, obviously they're ready to go.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, it's...
So you'd probably want to get them in the ground pretty quickly.
Lickety-split, so that, that date's been set. Like I said, it's a, it's a good thing.
I think the garden club has done their homework. I think it's a worthy proposal. Uh, they've, they've done everything they need to do to prepare for this. As Mr. Newitt said, uh, the space is excellent.
Couldn't believe it.
It really is nice.
It's actually grass.
It'll be a very, it'll be a very nice spot. So I certainly support, um, guess and would encourage the board to support it as well.
Uh, I move that we accept the donation from trees, Retrius Orchard, of 15 apple trees for an orchard at EMS. It's presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Okay, next up is a discussion and consideration of photocopier, printer lease, purchase and service supply agreement.
This is the first of two actions we're going to be asking the board to take on this particular issue. What this particular item is intended to do is to get the board to approve a five-year contract with the Transco Business Technologies that includes a lease-to-purchase agreement for copiers and printer equipment through US Bank and a service and supply contract as well. Once that is approved, we will give the copy of these minutes to, um, the company, and they will work with the, uh, bond council to develop an actual motion for bond approval at the next board meeting. This is a contract that, um, was bid with Ellsworth, R S U 24, and with Hancock and Lamore, I believe, correct, April? With a number of companies that submitted bids, and this is the one that won out. The final numbers, I believe, April has, they came in under what we had budgeted. They include software that, um, we had budgeted separately for, and we talked about that in our budget workshop. So I would encourage you to approve this contract so we may move forward with the lease agreement. If there are questions on the numbers, certainly, I think April may be able to answer some of those for us.
I move that we approve a five-year contract with Transco Business Technologies that includes a lease-to-purchase agreement for copier and printer equipment through US Bank and service and supply from the Ellsworth School Department, copier and printer needs.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, next up is a second read, approval of student dress code policy, J I C A. Okay?
I move that we approve the second read and adopt student dress code policy, J I C A, as recommended by the policy committee.
Marsha?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
All in favor? Thank you.
The next item, discussion and consideration of overnight trip.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Schaefer, um, but I'm here to represent Katherine Keefe as the advisor for the High School Outing Club. Um, we tried to do a, an overnight trip to Iloho this past Labor Day, and because so many students have sporting events, just the advisors one, which was a lot of fun, but we would like to do it again and be able to bring the students along. It would be $50 per person, and we'd be able to bring up to eight students. We would take two school vans over, take the ferry over in the morning, um, camp for two nights, so we'd be gone June 18th to the 21st. So we camp for two nights there, or three nights there. Three nights there, and then come back on the 21st. So what we're planning on doing is going over, hiking. Katherine Keefe does have her Wilderness First Responder, and she has a lifeguard as well, not that will necessarily be swimming too much, but, um, she'll be going on all the hikes with the kids, and I think we're going to have a, someone back at the camp just in case they need to do something there. So that's our plan for that, and we just need to get that approved.
Any questions?
So there'll be two advisors going with the eight kids?
I think so. We're going to have eight kids, and we're looking to have, it'll be myself, Katherine Keefe, and then we're looking for two male advisors to come as well. Because we'll have two different lean twos.
Steve's so many fun things.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the outing club overnight trip as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? It sounds like a fun trip. Have a great time. The next item is consideration of teacher nominations.
Yes, I have a teacher nomination to present to you this evening. We have Julie Taylor, who's being nominated for Ellsworth High School Science. Mrs. Taylor worked as a long-term substitute in the science department this year at Ellsworth High School in place of Mrs. Hardison. She's graduated the College of the Atlantic in 2006, where she majored in human ecology with a focus in marine science and education. She also works as a staff naturalist aboard the Bar Harbor Whale Watch Company during the summer months. She was chosen by Mr. Clifford in the search committee because of her love of science, strong work ethic, positive attitude, and positive relationship she established with students. If the nomination's confirmed, she'll be teaching biology, anatomy, and physiology next year. I had the opportunity also to meet with Julie, and I think she will be a very positive addition to the staff.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of Julianne Taylor for Ellsworth High School Science Teacher to a one-year probationary contract for the 2016-17 school year.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Confirmation of superintendent's nomination of second-year probationary teachers.
You have, you have the list of names in your, uh, graph minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to a second-year probationary contract for the 2016-17 school year. Kent McLaughlin, Valerie McCloskey, Adam Smith, Mary Michael Billings, Joseph Kephart, Capehart?
Capehart.
Anthony Jones, Heidi Amler, Kayla Smith, Patricia Hamilton, Tori LaBrutton. And, and Brandy Walsh. And Hunter Havil.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a move to a vote, all in favor? Thank you. The next item is confirmation of superintendent's nomination of third-year probationary teachers.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to a third-year probationary contract for the 2016-17 school year. Jamie Carter, Jennifer Cowan, Judith Dede, Kristen Dubois, Robert Ellis, Patricia French-Eaton, Susan Frost, Sheila Gallagher, Christie Hardison, Deborah Jordan, Carolyn Cutney, Abigail Kavaya, Lee McCullough, Mariah Perry, Silas Ratten, Ginger Stoneton, Callie Vanetta Stein-Ferrar, Matthew Libberly, and Melanie Rourke. Did I? No, no, intention.
Oh.
Do you have a second? Thank you, Marsha. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Confirmation of superintendent's nomination of continuing contract teachers.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to continuing contract for the 2016-17 school year. Peter Endeland, Leah Olson, Stacy Raduski, Shannon Westfall, Heather Pelletier.
I second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Discussion and consideration of superintendent of schools contract.
I move that we amend the superintendent's contract in accordance with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended by the board.
I second that.
Thank you, Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Approval of Ellsworth School Department 2016-17 budget.
Provided you with, um, some documents, um, some updates from the workshop that we had last evening, um, and if I can do my presentation. Members of the board, audience members, and members of the viewing public, I'm pleased to present the proposed FY '17 Ellsworth School Department budget this evening. Our second year as a new Ellsworth School Department has successfully built on the foundation established during the 14-15 school year. foundation established during the 14-15 school year. We continue with our focus on restoring the school department to its former status as a premier school system, have continued a systemic pre-K through adult education philosophy for operations and decision-making, continued with our work to transition to a proficiency-based educational instructional model, received board approval of our vision and mission for the school department that incorporates community input and values regarding education, and restoring pride in the Ellsworth School Department and the school department brand. We also appreciate the great relationship we have and enjoy the support of our city council and citizens. Along with all the successes of the first year, we also recognize and appreciate the responsibility to move the school department forward and be part of the ongoing growth of the city and to be a partner to the desired economic development of the city of Ellsworth. Budget preparation efforts are focused on a combination of current needs, sustainability for future budget years, and adequately funding our educational program with a budget that is fiscally responsible to our citizens. The general overview of the budget is we've included staffing to enhance instructional practices and operational needs and efficiencies. Included in that would be a new grade six teaching position to support levels of enrollment, adding a half-time technology integration teacher to enhance the use of technology resources as teaching and learning tools, increasing a current .5 full-time equivalent foreign language position at Ellsworth High School to a full-time position to accommodate course requests and potentially expand foreign language to our middle school, restructuring the Ellsworth Elementary/Middle School Assistant Principal/Athletic Director position to accommodate needs administratively at the school, one of which would include the evaluation program you just saw presented, and what that resulted in was an addition of days to that employee's contract, an increase by adding a half-time, full-time equivalent teacher for adult education that's going to allow our director, who has shared directing and teaching duties for two years, to direct full-time. And it's important that the viewing public and members of the audience understand that in addition to adding these particular staff positions, we've also looked in other areas to find efficiencies. We've eliminated one of the two alternative education teaching positions at the high school because we do not need that position to service the student load that we have for next year. We've also decided not to fill the vacant academic teacher position at Hancock County Technical Center, which is a position that would have needed to be funded within the local budget this year because it was finished with being funded three years under the Perkins Grant, which is the limit for that. The way that we're going to fill that void is by using teachers from Ellsworth High School to provide instruction to the all-day students at Hancock County Technical Center and to support that, we're increasing the academic ed tech position at the vocational school from .5 full-time equivalent to full-time equivalent. Okay? It's also important to announce for the viewing public to remember that we did reduce staff last year. As you recall, we reduced the carpentry program from a full-time position to a half-time position for enrollment and we also eliminated one social studies position at Ellsworth High School. Also included in this budget, which I'll get into more detail in a few minutes, will be there are contractual wage and benefit expenses. There are facilities and operational needs at all three of our sites and as we've discussed through the budget preparation process over the past couple of years, maintenance of our facilities is a priority. Ellsworth High School, believe it or not, is over 20 years old now. The vocational school is between 35 and 40 years old and part of EEMS is really new, the other part was constructed in 1970 but renovated. But with the age of our buildings, particularly HCTC and Ellsworth High School, maintenance is a priority. It's a necessary upgrade to the bus inventory. As we've discussed in the budget preparation process, we will be paying two lease-to-purchase payments this year. One is the final payment on a bus that was transferred back to the Ellsworth School Department from RSU 24 as part of the withdrawal. And again, if you remember, that's one that we learned about at the end of last year after the budget was approved, okay? And also we'll be adding a bus to the inventory because one of the other buses we have in our current inventory meets the state's definition for a bus that can be replaced. We've increased professional development dollars to support teacher work in the ongoing transition to proficiency-based education. Our teachers and administrators really do a fantastic job of working during PLCs and the limited number of professional development days that we have, making the ongoing transition to a proficiency-based model, but they need time above and beyond the school year. So we've added money to support that work in the summer hours. Okay? We've also included funding to support teacher work with students who are not meeting standards on assessments that have been provided to them during the school day. As you know, many of you are parents, you know that we're working to refine a system whereby if a student does not meet standards on an assessment, we provide reteaching, provide a reassessment, and we keep doing that over and over until such time as that student meets the standards. Adding time after school and funding to support that will provide more opportunities for teachers to work with students to get those opportunities addressed. Okay? Coupled with that will be the addition of after-school transportation to support students to be able to stay after school so it's not as much of an impact on parents to need to come and pick them up, okay? And the final big-ticket item would be that this is the first payment we'll be making on debt service for the school bond from the city that was taken out in 2014. As you all recall, during that budget preparation process, there were between an estimated $700,000 and $800,000 of one-time costs associated with the withdrawal from RSU 24. The decision was made back at that time that rather than add between $700,000 and $800,000 to the budget proposal for the first year of operation, to take out a bond to pay those expenses and pay them off over a five-year period gradually. This is the first year of that. So again, probably 90% of those expenses did fall into the category of one-time expenses. There are some of them that are ongoing, but it's a smaller part. The important part is it's a payment that needs to be made and this does not represent current operational expenses and we'll talk about that a little bit later. In terms of the expenditure side of the budget, and one of the documents I provided you gives you the cost centers, in regular instruction, we're seeing an increase of 3.9% or $224,000. The increases here include the new grade six position and the half-time foreign language position, which is about $61,000. On top of that would be your contractual salary increases would be another $30,000. Anthem overall premiums for Anthem increased by 8.86%, the amount of premiums did. That accounts for $112,000 in regular instruction. And based upon historical expenditures, and this is a term you're going to hear several times through this presentation, now that we have two years of operation under our belt, we're developing a better sense of what historical expenditure is going to be in certain cost centers. Substitute teachers is one. We've had a number of medical leaves this year, a number of maternity leaves this year. We know we're expecting some leaves next year, so we've increased that line by $20,000. That covers the entire spectrum of regular instruction. Again, that regular instruction is pre-K through grade 12, not special needs and not CTE. Under special instruction, we have an increase of $16,000 or half a percent, okay? And again, there are contractual increases involved in that. And when we look at our teachers and administrators under special ed, we're talking about an aggregate 1.74% increase in wages. For ed techs, we're talking a half percent increase for a total of 1.18%. So it's not a significant amount and the reason is because we had some retirements and we had some rehiring of lower-salary teachers. Okay? We're also seeing, believe it or not, that Anthem premiums are reducing under special instruction. Career and technical education, we're seeing an increase of 14% here. Probably the biggest item in this would be the introduction of a new biomedical program that you're all familiar with, and this is a program that's being added at HCTC with cooperation from Jackson Laboratory. As all the viewing public knows, Jackson Laboratory is going to be moving their most growing operation from their current location in Bar Harbor to the former Lowe's facility here in Ellsworth. They're looking at working with us, have helped to design the curriculum for this program and right now we are having a number of, 14 students who have applied for the program. That's a cost of just under $39,000 to start the program. The instructor for that program will be funded under the Perkins Grant for the first three years, but to help offset the cost of that program coming in, we are expecting $36,750 in tuition revenue. But I mentioned this program and talked about it a little bit because it's a fantastic opportunity to be working with a preeminent organization in the biomedical field and it's an opportunity for our kids and other students in Hancock County to get real experiences. Included in that program next year are going to be opportunities to have some field experiences working with Jackson Lab people. Okay? We're also looking at maintenance needs at Hancock County Technical Center, the amount of $48,000. What we found is there were two items over the past few years that were not included. It was a service contract was not included in the budget. That's why you look in your budget reports, you'll see some overdrafts there. That is included this year. We're also having the addition of having to take on sanding and salting services which were provided by the city for the past couple of years. They do not have the manpower to do that anymore. Also included in that would be security cameras and replacing half of 48 windows. Okay, there are windows throughout the entire facility and as you know, it's very old. The budget is including funding to replace half of those windows in this next coming fiscal year, half in the subsequent fiscal year. It'll be more energy efficient and will result in a savings. That's part of the increase. On the maintenance side, we also have to remember that we still have to replace the roof on HCTC in the next couple of years and we're talking probably $100,000 expenditure. What we'll be looking to do is to pursue the state's revolving renovation loan program for that project, which is in essence a interest-free loan for which some of the costs are forgiven. The other place where we see a bit of an increase at HCTC would be we have three students who will be attending the welding program which is housed in Bucksport and that comes at an estimated cost of about $15,400. Next cost center would be other instruction. What other instruction includes would be your after-school program, summer school program, and your co- and extracurricular programs. While the increase percentage-wise seems extravagant, 18.3%, $89,000, we need to look at the items that are included there. First and foremost is there are $23,000 included in the draft to replace our after-school program and summer school program. As you recall from previous budget discussions, this was a placeholder put in to provide funding to support these programs in the event that the after-school grant, 21st Century Grant that we applied for in conjunction with the Hancock School Department, was not awarded. Either was not awarded to us or we didn't know until after the budget process. We didn't expect to hear until June. Unfortunately, we found out this week that we did not get funded for the grant, unfortunately. So that $23,000 will serve to replace that program which benefits a number of students. We also have a $9,500 increase on the extracurricular stipend line. What this includes is a correction to the volleyball program. That program, when it was established a number of years ago, when looking at establishing the stipend, there's a formula that you use. For a varsity-level program, it was being funded more like a sub-varsity or freshman-level program. That's been corrected. The other thing that you see and hear is the addition of an assistant swim coach to accommodate increasing numbers for that program, girls' freshman basketball, and a new program that we hope will be supported is known as Unified Basketball. This is a basketball program sponsored by the Main Principles Association that takes place after the regular basketball season. What it involves is an opportunity for special-needs students and non-special-needs students to participate collaboratively on a team, play a schedule against other schools that have this program, and compete. And there are rules that specify the amount of time that students and associates get to spend on the floor and the amount of points that can be scored by certain people in the program. It's a fantastic program and just to express support of it, I want to recount something that our Athletic Director of the High School, Josh Brost, shared with me. He attended a game while researching this down at Mount Desert Island High School and engaged in a conversation with one of the participants from one of the teams. Probably 10 or 15-minute conversation, he found it a very positive conversation. When he spoke with his colleague at Mount Desert Island High School, Bunkie Dow, Mr. Dow explained to him, this is a student who participated in the Unified Basketball Program who prior to that student's participation in the program would not have been able to have that conversation, would not have been comfortable. So not just athletic and physical activity skills are part of this program, there are other things that are benefit as well. And if you followed it at all, you've seen that the schools that have added this have had positive reports. So that's part of that $9,500 increase, okay? I referred earlier to transportation for after-school student help with teachers. That's an increase of about $12,500. What this supports is a bus for each the high school and EEMS to provide that after-school transportation. The other place where there's an increase is in purchase services and uniforms and athletic trainers. Uniforms are up a little bit because last year in the budget process, there were uniforms that were in the budget that were taken out, those have been restored this year. But the biggest part of that is about $25,000 to procure the services of an athletic trainer at EEMS for athletic events and EHS for athletic events. They will attend the home athletic events and also be available to work with students one day a week at the middle school, two days a week at the high school. Student and staff services is the next line. Student and staff services encompasses services we provide to students, our guidance services, school nursing, instructional technology, library media, curriculum and assessment are all encompassed under student and staff services. It's a 4.27% increase. Or $71,000. Included in that would be the half-time technology integration teacher, which would carry with her a salary of $21,900. Health insurance increase of $31,900, which includes that new position. Summer staff work for proficiency-based education transition of $15,000, not $290, is also included in this line. I talked about that earlier, it's part of our ongoing transition. And software, this is for the evaluation software that our evaluation committee presented a little bit earlier tonight, it's called Teach Point, which comes with a cost of $4,700. And also to upgrade the automotive lab at HCTC, half of it's being paid through the school budget, $10,000, is to allow our students to continue to get certified through a national program. The other half comes through the Perkins Grant. See, those are the four major cost drivers in student and staff services. System administration, which is your superintendent's office and your business office, we're seeing a 2.28% increase here. This increase from the last time we met because what we found out was we had not received a bill for our audit. Where we thought we were going to see a decrease in audit expenses of $6,000, we're now seeing an increase of $6,500, okay? We're also seeing an increase in software maintenance for ProFund at $3,500. We're seeing an increase in wages and insurance throughout the office of $14,900. Where we're offsetting that to get to the total of $11,000 of increase in system administration is reduced expenses for legal, advertising, and equipment. And again, those are pieces that are based upon historical expenditures that we now have two years of history on. School administration, which is your principal's office, we are seeing a 6.96% increase here. What we're seeing as drivers there would be contractual salaries and benefits, seeing salaries increasing by $21,000, and this is all of your principals and all of your administrative assistants included in those wage lines. Also Anthem premiums increasing by $24,500. Facilities and maintenance, overall, we're seeing 2.39% increase in facilities maintenance, just under $50,000. What's included in that line? Custodial wages are increasing by $26,000, but interestingly, because of staffing changes, we're seeing Anthem premiums being reduced by $13,000. As part of historical expenditures, purchase services and repairs are increasing by $17,000. Custodial supplies, historical purchases, increasing by $20,000. Electricity at EEMS and EHS are increasing by $20,500. Again, this is on two years of history of expenditures, okay? I would also add that we have two heat pumps at Ellsworth High School now and that has contributed a little bit to that as well. Where we balance some of that off is in a very favorable heating oil contract, we'll be paying $1.57 next year, we're seeing reduction in heating oil lines at the middle school and the high school in $47,000. We're also seeing a decrease in requests for equipment on the maintenance line of almost $23,000, reduction in property and casualty insurance premiums of $10,000, and an increase of $27,000 in capital renewal and construction at Ellsworth High School. Included in that would be replacement of windows at the high school. Again, similar to HCTC, our entire administrative suite, we're principals, assistant principals, and administrative assistance offices, and the guidance offices are the windows that were with the original building constructed back in the 90s. They're not energy efficient and we're looking at replacing half of them in FY '17, half of them in FY '18. That comes with a cost of $22,000. And also miscellaneous repairs and services based on historical expenditures, we're seeing an increase of $20,000 there. So with all of that said and done, we're looking at an increase of $50,000 and 2.39% on your maintenance side of things for us to be able to continue our projects. That's really not a significant increase. And the other thing, I'm looking at my other sheet, it also includes work on the entryway at the high school. It also includes continued resurfacing of the parking lot, installation of cameras, repair to the sidewalk, and the second of a three-year phase-in of exterior door replacements. Transportation, we're looking at a 4.23% increase. And again, there are some increases and decreases throughout this cost center, 1.73%. Anthem premiums up, $24,000. We're seeing a decrease in insurance and repairs of $20,000. We're projecting a decrease in special circumstance transportation of $8,300. We've added a used van purchase and are budgeting $6,000 for that and this is for one of those unanticipated needs. We have a student that needs to be transported outside of the district and we do not- We have a student that needs to be transported outside of the district, and we do not have sufficient vehicle inventory to make that happen. We're seeing a decrease in propane payments, because we, again, we locked in a very favorable amount. It's a forty-five hundred dollar decrease. But when you look at the overall increase, after you've looked at all those positives and negatives that I just outlined, with the two bus lease payments we have, which will be a total of three this year, it's an increase of thirty-six thousand dollars. There's your major cost driver there. Debt service. Debt service, we see an increase of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. As I mentioned earlier, the primary driver of this increase would be the first payment back to the city for the bond that was taken out in two thousand fourteen. The reason it doesn't have an increase of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand is because the interest payments on the bonds for our construction projects decreases by years, so it's a little bit less than that. But we'll come back to that in a few minutes. That's an increase in this budget. And again, the bulk of that increase is not representing operational costs. Another category that's referred to as other, we'd like to refer to it as food service program, is also seeing a decrease of fourteen and a half percent. It's a twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollar reduction. Included in that would be, we're seeing, as you heard earlier, increased participation in our food service programs. I think Mr. Daley and his staff are working very hard at ensuring that that's going to happen. Also, taking a miscellaneous repair and replacement account and deciding to put money out of existing fund balance, about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, into a reserve fund that we can have when twenty-year-old refrigeration equipment at Ellsworth High School finally wears out. As we've talked about in our budget workshops and previous meetings, the equipment is twenty years old, we had it when the high school was first constructed. It's working right now, but it's like owning an automobile that's ten, twelve, fifteen years old. It's working great today, it could go at any time. Having the money in reserve will allow us not to raise it, we'll have it and be authorized to expend it when we need it. So that helps account for that reduction in food service. Adult education will be the other place that we're seeing a decrease, a decrease of seventeen point three percent. Even though we're adding a halftime teacher, because we are seeing an increase in subsidy for the first time, and this is the third year that we'll be operating an adult education program, so we're seeing subsidy that we received from the prior two years, an increase in fifty-eight thousand dollars in subsidy, it shows a reduction in city's contribution to the adult ed program of forty-six thousand dollars. When you take the entire... Let me stop. Are there questions on any of those cost centers? When you look at the overall budget, after talking about it in cost center format, what we are looking at is on the general fund, and the general fund is the portion that does not include adult education, a budget of twenty million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents, which is an increase of eight hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars or four point two percent. When you factor adult education into that, because of the increase in subsidy, you see an increase in expenditures to twenty million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which represents an increase of seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars or three point nine one percent. When you look at the revenue side of that, what we're looking at is increasing the fund balance. Again, and the fund balance, just to refresh everyone's memory, is the amount of money that remains in an undesignated account following the end of prior school years, revenues received, and expenditures, and the total of that that's available to apply against expenses in subsequent years. We've increased that by fifty thousand dollars. What that results in is an overall local appropriation increase from last year. Total local appropriation would be eleven million three hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand or two point two six percent. That's where the budget is based upon what I've presented here. Now, before we talk a little bit about the revenue side and get more specific about the amount we're receiving from the state, I do want to talk just a little bit about essential programs and services and the funding model. As you know from past years, school departments are funded by a funding model known as essential programs and services. Created well over a decade ago, the model was intended to provide the basis or the baseline by which schools should be expected to provide programs and services essential to ensuring students have the opportunities to meet main learning results. Again, it was intended, essential programs and services, to be a baseline of what should be expended. The data was gathered to determine those levels from high-performing schools across the state. It was never intended to be a cap on expenditures. However, along with the passage of LD one years ago, a couple of things started to occur. One was that the perception of essential programs and services funding level transformed from the base amount that you need to provide to ensure students have equitable opportunities to an expenditure cap. And the reason it became an expenditure cap was that was where the requirement came in that schools had to report, we're expending above or below the essential programs and services funding model. I think it's important for our members of the audience here and our members of the viewing public to understand, that model, again, was designed to be a baseline for expenditures, not a spending cap. The other piece that I would like to talk about and address with essential programs and services is, since its creation, and since the voter mandate years ago for the state to contribute fifty-five percent of the total cost of education statewide, this funding model has never been fully funded. Over the years that we've been looking at this, it's been funded anywhere from forty-three percent to a high of, I believe, fifty-two percent. We're expecting it to be forty-six percent this year. Even with the school budget that you have, the model's not being fully funded, most often you're going to be above that essential programs and services funding level. But I think it's important that people do understand that. Now, this school budget, just like last year's budget was, will exceed the EPS model by two million dollars. The reason it does that is that the funding model, not fully funded, does not fully fund or recognize our expenses in facilities maintenance, special ed, technology, transportation, or professional development. Questions on that? We've talked about expenditures, now let's talk a little bit about revenues. If you recall, at this time last year, the challenges we were having around this table and in working collaboratively with the city council were a lack of revenues. We were experiencing a decrease in projected tuition revenues, and also less funding from the state than we anticipated. Twelve months later, we're dealing with a situation where the Ellsworth School Department is in a far more advantageous situation than many school districts across the state. We're going to see an increase in funds received from the Department of Education. Set adult education aside for a moment, and let's talk about the net increase from the state. As we all know, through essential programs and services, the Department of Education sets a mil rate, and that mil rate is applied to school districts' valuations, and school departments have to raise a certain amount of money in order to receive full state funding. We're being required to raise eight million five hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars this year, which is actually almost thirty-one thousand dollars less than last year. The reason that that occurred is the three-year average valuation of Ellsworth that is used in the school funding formula decreased. So when applied against that mil rate, it decreased the amount that we have to raise. Debt service reimbursement, which is reimbursement we get for construction project that remains at EEMS, and we're seeing a reduction in that of almost thirty-nine thousand dollars, and that's because the interest payment is reducing as the years go on. On subsidy and other subsidizable costs, we're slated to receive an increase of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-three cents for a net increase of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. So that's the net increase. Included in that subsidy piece would be our subsidy that is based upon our enrollment, student enrollment, and reimbursement we receive through the other subsidizable costs, which are costs that are not part of the per pupil funding portion of the formula, but costs that are recognized based upon the amount you expended in a prior year. For example, special education, transportation, career and technical education. We're seeing an increase in reimbursements for those, and that's what accounts for that increase in subsidy. When you add the adult education subsidy that we're receiving for the first time of fifty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents, total increase that we're receiving from the state compared to last year is six hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. We're also looking at receiving an increase, net increase of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in tuition revenues and the miscellaneous revenue line. The miscellaneous revenue line is down a little bit, but the tuition numbers are up. The net increase is two hundred and fifty-three thousand. The only place where we're seeing a negative, unfortunately, would be in the fund balance. As we've talked about through the budget development process, in year one of the Ellsworth School Department, year two of the Ellsworth School Department, the amount of fund balance that was applied to the budget was one point two million dollars. We were able to do that in year one because of the amount of money that was coming back from the RSU. We were able to do it last year because we had a positive and conservative budget year in the first year. But also, we made the decision to do it because we were looking at a hefty local increase last year. If you remember, we talked about a nine or 10 percent increase on the local side last year. We applied those funds to help keep that down. That's not a sustainable level, as we've talked about, so what we were looking at this year is, based upon our projected end-of-year balances for this year, is applying eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars rather than one point two million. That's a decrease of three hundred and fifty thousand. Hate to end the revenue piece on a negative side, but it's really positive news when you look at revenues. So when you look at all those factors, that's what results in the total local appropriation increase of two hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. Now, one thing that I want to make clear to everybody is that this is, again, the first year of five years of payments on the bond taken by the city to cover expenses associated with withdrawal of the Ellsworth schools from RSU twenty-four. At the time, the first budget was created, as we talked about, it was decided to pay those costs upfront through a bond rather than add them to the local budget. And I think it was a wise and prudent decision. But at that time, when the decision was made, it was understood that at some point down the road, this year, payments would have to be made on those expenses. They have to be made, they will be part of the local contribution. However, I want people to look at it through this lens. With the majority of those costs, overwhelming majority being one-time expenses, you know, share of certain salaries and wages from the RSU, certain equipment needs for equipment that we didn't get coming back from the RSU because of the agreement, certain needs like that, that were not ongoing operational expenses. Let's look for a moment if we were to take non-operational expenses out of the Ellsworth School Department budget for this year. If we were to take that loan payment of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred dollars out of this budget, we would be looking at a general fund budget of twenty million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which would represent an increase of six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars or three point two nine percent. If you add adult education into that with the increase in subsidy there, you're looking at an increase of five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars or three point oh one percent. Now, again, that's setting aside payments that need to be made. Taking those non-operational costs out of it, if you looked at the operational component of our budget, taking those out would translate to a total local appropriation of eleven million one hundred and forty thousand dollars, which would be an increase over last year of just under seventy-three thousand dollars or point six six percent. If you're looking at it in terms of an average home, one hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're talking about a ten dollar and forty cent increase a year on property taxes. Again, that's with the understanding that we all understand that decision to take the bond out was a good decision. Money has to be paid back, it's part of our budget, because in essence, we borrowed the money from the city, but it doesn't represent operational costs. But if you look at it from the perspective that we're talking about operational costs, we're coming in with a budget that is a near no impact for operational reasons on the local citizenry. Questions on that? This proposal is only requesting what is necessary within the constraints of available resources to support our vision, mission, and direction of the School Department and the City of Ellsworth. While there are many other initiatives that we've talked about last year and this year that we would like to add to the budget, we note there are constraints, and this budget supports the necessary work towards proficiency-based education transition, provides appropriate and adequate opportunities for our students both academically and in co- and extracurricular. It supports ongoing facility maintenance and upgrades, which is necessary, and continues to move the Ellsworth School Department as part of the City of Ellsworth forward as we continue to restore our status as a premier school system that not only provides outstanding programming for our students, but also serves as an attractive option for school choice communities and families considering moving to Ellsworth, and as a partner with the city in the ongoing economic growth and development of the City of Ellsworth. So with that budget before you, my recommendation is that you vote to approve the School Department budget as presented, and authorize me to submit the budget to the city council for Can I address the question? When the budget is approved, the budget will be approved by you as a board in totality here. You'll be approving the budget as presented, and we'll present that to the city council. When the council addresses it next Monday night, there will be several different council orders, and what they will do is, they will look at the budget from the general fund, which is everything we've talked about tonight, excluding adult education, but they will also have separate articles to address adult education. Specifically, they will also pull out food service for one of their articles, and non-state-funded debt service is one of those articles. But my recommended motion for you tonight is to approve the budget as presented and authorize me to submit it to the city council for approval.
I move that we approve the two thousand sixteen-seventeen School Department budget as presented, and to authorize the superintendent to submit the budget to the Ellsworth City Council for approval.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing that, we'll move to a vote. All in favor? All right. Onto calendar and announcements.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, thank you very much. Meeting schedule, school board workshop Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at six P.M.
For the members, we'd like to let you know that we have learned earlier today that that meeting is actually going to be held here in council chambers. That's going to be a joint workshop with the city council, and it's going to be a presentation by the auditor.
The time is the same?
Time is the same, that is correct.
And the other, the other calendar or announcement to talk about is the school board meeting, the next school board meeting, which is Tuesday, June fourteenth.
Yes.
At EEMS Library at six thirty.
Yes, and the reason that we're scheduled at the EEMS Library is June fourteenth happens to be Election Day, and I think this is a good reminder to our citizens. Election Day is the day of the budget validation referendum, where we encourage you to come out and exercise your civic responsibility and vote on the school budget that is approved ultimately next Monday night by the city council. But that's why we'll be meeting at the EEMS Library.
Ms. Brenda?
Yes. Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Eight nineteen.